Matt, we're going to do you a little thing while we're waiting.
Sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is my good friend Pat Taylor, Mayor of Highlands. He's down here tonight. I was afraid he wasn't going to get here. Probably got either snow in or got behind the track to trailer trash.
Well, we've worked together on a lot of common issues in the region and so forth. And last Monday, we both were supposed to be at two events, and it was a conflict. So Mayor Scott, having the regional vote, has said, "I will go for the southwestern commission meeting," which is very important, "and I'll take you in form." And I said, "Well, we're to be at a ceremony on Tuesday morning in Raleigh." So I said, "I will go there, and there will be an award ceremony at the Attorney General's office, and I will accept my award and, on behalf of Mayor Scott, his award. So I just wanted to come down tonight and share with everyone and Mayor Scott his award." Let me tell you what the award is. It is a North Carolina Dogwood Award that is always issued by the Attorney General or people who have provided community service throughout the state of North Carolina. I didn't realize it, but the Dogwood is the state's following. That's why it is a Dogwood Award. But Attorney General Stein had 21 recipients of his Dogwood Award this year, and it was really impressive from the folks that were receiving the awards. For example, one SRO officer was awarded a Dogwood because he intervened and took a gun from a student who was about to commit a terrible act in a school. There were police chiefs that were being awarded for their work in crime, and there were other people who were getting awards for their advocacy for consumer issues and community service. And Mayor Scott and I were awarded a Dogwood Award, and let me just say what the Attorney General said. And that is, we were given an award because during the time when Mission was selling the resources of Mission Healthcare to Hospital Corporation of America, Mayor Scott, especially and I, became very concerned that the smaller units in this mega transition, the sales agreement was $1.5 billion. We were very concerned that the people in these outlying communities might lose service or might be overlooked. So we started working with another person here in Macon County in Highlands Barrett Hall, who was an attorney, looking at the agreement, and started to advocate for these smaller communities. And we actually went to the Attorney General's office, spent an afternoon with his staff, urging the Attorney General to approve the transaction, the sale agreement, but put conditions on it, guaranteeing services, and making sure that hospitals in these small outlying areas would not be closed prematurely or even closed at all. Lo and behold, the Attorney General listened to some of these things. For example, we wanted a monitor to make sure that all of the parties involved would follow the agreement that he approved. So Attorney General Stein, we appreciate his leadership, and he also gave Mayor Scott and I a Dogwood Award, and I just wanted to bring it down to the boss if he couldn't be there. And congratulations, boss.
I want to say that I'm also accepting this on behalf of the Operation Heartbeat Two, which tried so hard to save labor and delivery here. I can't accept this by myself with all these folks that tried so hard.
It was a team effort.
And what I'm going to do, I'm going to let Pat go. It may be snowing up there. Go get behind a log truck or something.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we're two minutes late. I'm sorry. I apologize. First item of business tonight is a pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Barbara McCray.
Please join me in saying the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the November the 4th Town Council minutes. So has everybody had a chance to read them? If so, I'll call for a motion to approve the council minutes as presented.
I'll move.
Is that second?
Second.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Okay. Good. All right, this is kind of a sad moment for me right now, but I'm going to recognize the service of council members Adam Kinsey and Brandon McMahon, and we're just sorry to see you guys leaving out. We really are. And we have a little token here. Brandon, let me get out here.
Step up front, you think?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. Come on. Adam, you're not getting left out. Well, we've had a lot of fun together.
Yeah.
Think about that. So I just want to say we're going to miss both of you, and it's not much, but here it is.
Thank you so much.
Presented to Brandon McMahon, Adam Kinsey, in appreciation for your dedicated service to the town of Franklin as council members 2015 through 2019. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all so much. Okay.
Where did I go?
Oh, no, we keep your phone.
Yeah.
Chat's in the mail.
Thank you, John.
Even though.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, John. You want to... Let's see here. What did I do with my agenda? Yeah? What did I do with it?
I'll spare it to you. I bet it. Here it is. I got it.
All right. That is exactly it. Thank you.
Now, there's other stuff down here, too. There's the third page.
It can't be two and four. Oh, gosh. All right. All right, the next item of business is the oath of office for the mayor and town council members. So if the newly elected will come up, I guess that... Dick, are you ready, sir?
Sir. I think we're going to start out with you, Mr. Scott.
All right, I'm going to let Miss Nancy come out here.
Almost.
I don't know if y'all know it, Nancy served 11 years on this board. All right, you will raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Robert S. Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Robert S. Scott.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support, maintain, and defend.
To support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Sign and get that back to summer. We're back.
All right, say aye and state your name.
I, Dinah Ashburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
I, Dinah Ashburn.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, say aye and state your name.
Aye, Robert S. Scott.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We're back.
I, Dinah Ashburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
I, Dinah Ashburn.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So say aye and state your name.
I, Dinah Ashburn.
Do swear that I will truly and honestly.
That I will truthfully and honestly.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah? About any day or two.
Sarah's her same age when she did this one. All right, say aye and state your name.
Aye, Joe Collins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Joe Collins.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
And I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, say aye and state your name.
Aye, Joe Collins.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Joe Collins.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of council member.
In the office of council member.
Of the town of Franklin.
Of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis here?
Both of them here.
Back and forward there. All right, excuse me. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Michael Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Michael Lewis.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, say aye and state your name.
Aye, Joe Collins.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Lewis here?
Both of them here.
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 Dick, thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item of business is the appointment of a mayor pro temp, and for you young people, that also is known as the vice mayor. And we're glad y'all are here tonight to see democracy in action. So I'll open the floor for nominations for vice mayor.
I'd like to be heard, Your Honor.
Yes.
It says appointment. Of course, it's an election among our board there, but I would like to make a motion that we have someone here who has shown heart and dignity and a lot of hard efforts for the town of Franklin in the past and I'm sure going forward. So it is my pleasure to nominate Ms. Barbara McCray to continue as the vice mayor pro temp, however it's said.
And we have a second. Any further nominations? All in favor of Barbara McCray as vice mayor? Welcome. Proud. The next item is the consent agenda for tonight. Has everybody had a chance to look over the consent agenda? Any questions?
I think we have to adopt the agenda first, don't we? Did we miss that one?
I guess I...
No, adopt the agenda.
Yeah, okay. Well, anybody got any changes they want to make to tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add the sculpture, funding for the sculpture that we agreed to in the budget. Just make that official.
All right, that would be BD, right after the fire department update. Okay?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm not going to be asking any action to be taken tonight, but I would want to discuss briefly the representation between the council members and the different fire police or the different stuff. So I'd like that to be on the... Or I can, whenever we go around the table, I can talk about it.
All right, yeah. I kind of thought we might wait till January.
I was suggesting taking the action.
Oh, okay. Sure. Sure, no problem whatsoever. Okay, is that all right with you? We'll move it to E, which is the... Okay. The next item is the public hearing. Okay, let's see, we did approve the consent agenda. Anybody having questions on it? Okay, I thought we voted on it out of order.
I believe you had a... And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't believe you had a motion vote on the adoption.
Okay.
You did have the changes.
I asked for if there were any changes, okay?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
With the changes made. Okay, second?
I second, but I'd like to announce when that street closing is so that the press can pick up on that date for the street closing for the Whoville event.
We're going... That's on the... Oh, okay.
That's in the...
It's Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Christmas Eve. Yeah. Okay. All right, and that's not Main Street.
No, 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 that's where everybody gets together to Town Square and sings some Christmas carols. So just, like I said, let the press pick up on that street closing for Whoville on Christmas Eve.
Okay. All right. Now that y'all have gotten me thoroughly confused. All right, I think we're ready now for the public hearing. We're running a few minutes late.
Motion to adopt.
I think, yeah.
No, 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 that's where everybody gets together to Town Square and sings some Christmas carols. So just, like I said, I want the press to pick up on that, street closing for Whoville on Christmas Eve.
Okay, all right. Now that y'all have gotten me thoroughly confused. All right, I think we're ready now for the public hearing. We're running a few minutes late.
Motion to adopt.
I think, yeah, if I could just ask this for clarity's sake, is there, is it a motion to adopt the agenda and to approve the consent agenda perhaps?
Yes, I think, I think so, okay. Second?
First and second.
They're second, okay. Yeah, all in favor? Okay, public hearing. This is for rezoning petition for Draymond Road. I'll declare the public hearing open. And Mr. Setser, sir, you're up to give an overview. And I think there's some folks here from the public to speak to it, and we'll get to you in just a minute, okay?
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Yeah, for you tonight is a petition for rezoning for, I'm not exactly, 312 Draymond Road. It's a property owned by the Fouts family, the Lilian Fouts Estate family and their children. It is 2.98 acres. It's off of Draymond Road, which is off of Belden Circle, which overlooks the Georgia Road. It's currently Zoned R1, and they are requesting it to be rezoned to commercial C3. In your packet, you should see there is the aerial and the zoning map where you can see what's highlighted and it's bordering the C3, and it's currently R1. You will also see the staff report about the said property and the rezoning, and the consistency statement, and the findings of fact from the planning board. The planning board did meet back in October, and they did vote to recommend the approval of it. They did have some discussion about traffic, which should, made some notes in the findings of fact that you'll see in the answers. They saw it was okay, as their recommendation to be rezoned, but had some concerns on traffic on Draymond Road. So, that, that's all I have as an overview.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board or Mr. Setser? If not, I have two people signed up to speak. Ms. Green? Janet Green?
Congratulations to all of you who re-elected. I, my name is Janet Green. I own property that adjoins the Fouts Estate property to the west, and also property on the west, to the west across Roller Mill Road. And I live just above this property to the door. I'm here to speak against the rezoning of this property to C2. I come reluctantly because I grew up with the Fouts, all the Fouts children, and I understand their desire to settle their parents' estate and sell the house. But my reasons for opposing the zoning petition are that this property sits in a neighborhood. I know that if you look at a flat map like you have before you, you see the property to the east and to the south are Zone C2. That's true, but making a decision by looking at a flat map like that is a little like the state government coming in and saying that there's no reason that students from Highlands can't come to school in Franklin. I would challenge you to go see this property before you make a decision. The property does not sit on the same level as the C2 area. It sits well above that area and within the defined neighborhood. And if, as some have suggested, the property were cut down to the level of the C2 area, what would happen to that end of Draymond Road? Because the property crosses Draymond Road. And a cut of that side would leave the next-door neighbor, Sandy Lovegrove, sitting just about 15 feet from a precipice. Not to mention how unsightly a red clay cliff would look coming in from the south of town. The best use of zoning is as a planning tool, and we don't know what the plan is for this property that calls for a C2 status. As it stands right now, the rest of the neighborhood plans to stay residential for the foreseeable future. So I would respectfully ask you not to rezon this property to C2. Thank you.
Ms. Dowell?
Well, I have done my homework because I didn't know I was going to talk. So I'm one of my students, okay. Three years ago, we were approached by some architects from Atlanta to sell all of Draymond Road. There was going to be PetSmart, TJ Maxx, I'm not sure exactly what it was, but I remember it correctly, and all of Draymond Road was going to be sold. Well, they had a year of due diligence, and everyone signed off on Draymond Road to be commercial. That means it would be stores all the way down 441 South. Everyone signed off. But the people decided, since they had a year of due diligence, they decided that they had a better place because they were just buying dirt. And we just feel like that 441 South, it's just time to move on, and that's the way Franklin's going to be going. And I just ask this board to think about, and I appreciate whatever your decision you make.
Is there anyone else to speak to this issue? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And if you will pass this down, please, ma'am. Okay, the next action is the board action on the rezoning petition for Draymond Road. Is any discussion, any board member want to discuss it? Yes, sir.
A question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is the property sold, or is this rezoning with the intention that it eventually will be sold?
I don't know that the property's been sold.
Three years ago, it was going to be sold. We all signed off to sell it to an architect, and they were going to bring, but right now it is residential. And we're just asking that Draymond Road be commercial.
I want to caution the council that by statute, you're not, and I don't think that's the question you asked, was, as it goes to ownership, and that's, that's a fair game question. You can't consider anything about intended use. So that's by statute not germane to your, your decision about rezoning. Rezoning is supposed to be made by decisions by compatibility of uses. So it's more a question of, do you think that a C2 or 3, commercial-type use is compatible with residential right next to it? That just is a sort of a broad guideline that is in state statute.
I'd like then to ask Justin if he could tell me briefly, without going into a lot of detail, what is allowed in a C3 district? Because I'm not familiar with all of the zoning.
C3 is pretty much everything commercial minus industrial uses. So it's just about everything you can have in our, minus, you know, the major industrial.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
How do the other neighbors feel? Are there any other neighbors here, or?
Sandy Lovegrove is a neighbor, and she's not able to be here. She's, she doesn't drive, and she is, has a little bit of trouble getting around. She sent a statement, she dictated a statement to me over the phone this afternoon if anybody's interested in it, and she disapproves of it.
If I could ask Justin a question, following up on what Jack just asked, C3, the, the application is to change it from R1 to C2. How is C2 different than what you just described as C3?
Oh, it's C3 on ours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the actual application.
Is C3 the most restrictive commercial designation, or the loosest commercial designation?
It's probably the most loosest, more. The, yeah, the only thing that's, is industrial's the next thing up. After that, that's the highest we have where you can have anything, industrial's the next, and this is just under industrial. And it's, yeah, so everything on the Georgia Road is either C3, or, you know, like where they're at is R1.
There used to be a batch plant right across from that. Now is that, that property right there where the concrete mixing plant was, is that the same designation, or is it different commercial?
Yeah, it's, it's that one to the south there. It's now, on your map, it'll say CR Car Wash. That's C3.
Okay. So what would be, I know you said industrial would be not part of C3, but what, in your mind, what would be the most impactful C3, allowed in a C3? I mean, you could possibly have something where there's a lot of trucks, delivery trucks coming in and out, or?
C3, pretty much the biggest thing that you see in C3 is going to be like a car dealership over an acre, or an RV, RV dealership over an acre. They allow, that's where we allow sweep state places. Those are allowed in C3. But then you pretty much got, you get everything in C2 and C1.
And the only access currently is Draymond Road, correct? There's no other?
Yeah, well, not without some grading.
Some grading.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this has already been, though, to the planning board, and their recommendation is for it to be classified as the C3.
Yeah, the, the planning board's an advisory board, but their recommendation was rezoning.
When it goes before the planning board, do they have people come to, I mean, neighbors, anybody that can come?
Yeah, they can all come. I believe about Sandy was there, and Ms. Green was there as well.
Okay, so they took those things into consideration when they, they advised that they were fine with it going to C3?
I assume that is.
Well, I mean, that's what, I'm just clarifying that.
They had reservations about the, the road, the road, traffic on the road, because it's a one-and-a-half-lane road.
I just want to lay out a couple of options that the council has before it, in terms of how to handle this. One thing to keep in mind is if you do reject the petition by both state law and the UDO, it is ineligible to be rezoned again for a year. So that, that is a, you know, fairly impactful decision, takes a good long while to ever reconsider it. You can either approve it tonight, or deny it, or table it, and, and there's, I, I mention that because the consistency statement you're asked to, to approve as you do this says we've looked at what our whole comprehensive plan for, for the town property is, and those of you who've been on the council know that I've been begging you for a long time, let's, let's look at a, a true comprehensive land use plan. You've got one on the way, and it's a couple of months out. So to me, tabling decision where you, especially where you have got some urging before you in, in public hearing that you've got potentially incompatible uses next to each other, and you're just about, you're comprehensively studying this right now, to me, is, is an option worth considering.
I, well.
Yes.
I agree with what you're saying. I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable. I, I travel that way a lot, and I know the traffic would be pretty horrendous, I think. It's a pretty dangerous area right now. I just would like to know a little bit more about what we see, the town, where we see the town growing, and how we see that, that happening.
I think there's little chance of this not being.
Let me know when you want to say it.
Sorry about that, Bob. There's little chance of this not becoming commercial in the, somewhere near future. It just, its highest and best use, as an objective observer, is, is for some type of commercial potential. That being said, there is a, a comprehensive plan that's in the works that actually talks about this area. I don't mind either way. I, I support it being turned to commercial. I'll support that after the future comprehensive land use plan comes to.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. This is hard, growing up with both families, and David Hill, and whoever else was out there. But, you know, that's why we're here. I kind of think about it as being the man in the booth at a football game whenever there's a call made on the field, and it's made by the planning board that we have chosen, and we honor their efforts. I have a hard time overriding their decision unless there's just a good and compelling reason. I am a little bit persuaded by the fact, apparently, that in the recent past, there was an effort to make it commercial. That was whenever it was going to go, I guess, lock, stock, and barrel the whole neighborhood, and that's fine. But there was obviously an intent at that point in time for it to go commercial, and now it may be a piecemeal approach, but I'll go with what the board thinks, but I, the, the planning board has made the call, and I don't personally see evidence that would just cause me to change that mind. That's all.
Any further? Yes, sir.
The only thing bothers me about it is if you're, from what I read from the agenda, and Justin, tell me if I'm wrong, it wasn't a full-throated recommendation. They did have concerns about Draymond Road being the only access to that property. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, that was the biggest, that was their biggest hiccup they kind of had to work around before they got to a recommendation. And I'll put that in the, try to put that in one of the answers to one of the questions. It was number four in the recommendations.
John, does that fall into any consideration we should or shouldn't have, or?
It's certainly up for your consideration. I put it that way. It's, it's a, you know, when you're considering a, a map amendment or a text amendment to the UDO, it's legislative, so it's not like, you don't have nearly as defined decision point as you do when it's a special use type decision. When you have those, you can say, you can only have this development if you bring us a traffic study and show us that it's only going to be X number of cars a day and so forth. But it's, it's fair game for your decision to, to either approve or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The application for this rezoning was September, September the 13th? Is that when it was first requested?
Yeah, that's when it was filed in office.
It was filed September the 13th, and I'm sure the planning board's had a long discussion about it. I'm not familiar with it. I know, I know where the property is, but that's about all I know about it, being, this is our first meeting, for two of us anyway. I feel a little bit uncomfortable about making a decision one way or the other, and I think the attorney had a reasonable idea to give us a little bit more time unless there's some pressing issue that needs to be resolved tonight. I'd like to ask that we take, take this up for official action at our January meeting, set a court and act on it tonight.
You want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Or further, all right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think I'd like to go and maybe walk around the property and just see what it really looks like, I think. Janet's point was, was good.
All of which, you're free to do, talk to whoever you want to. This is not special use, so there's no quasi judicial restraints on who you talk to or how you consider.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Certainly.
When do we expect the comprehensive plan to come in? I don't.
I think it's maybe for spring. Yeah, probably early spring, March, April, maybe, hopefully we'll inhabit back here for an adoption.
Okay, we have a motion. Any, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion that basically we were tabling, tabling it for tonight till January? Is that what you had in mind? Okay. All right, all in favor? Okay, it carries, and it's, it's tabled for January. All right, now I'll declare the public hearing. No, it's already closed. All right, we got a little out of order tonight, and it's probably my fault. We completely skipped the public session, and I've got some folks here that have signed up for public session. The first is Jonathan Talent, and little ground rules, you're limited to three minutes, and come on up. Glad to have you here tonight, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Scott, Town Council, Franklin. My crew and I have come here today to talk about the possibility of getting a public skate park somewhere in town. We would like to talk to you about the changes a skate park would make. If Franklin were to get a skate park, it would give the children, teens, and adults alike to place, and adults alike a place to skate and practice their skills. After the removal of the bowling alley and the rolling rink, there's no, there are very few places for the youth of Franklin to entertain themselves in the community. If Franklin were to get a skate park, roughly 200 to 300 young adults would use the park. That's not taking into consideration younger kids and adults. A park would encourage positive social interactions. It would also open a spot for skaters, BMX riders, scooter kids, and rollerbladers alike. A park would provide an area for students to come after school before their parents get home. Teenagers are too old for a babysitter, and they need a safe place to go and be themselves. With skateboarding coming up in the 2020 Olympics, Franklin could be holding the biggest group of natural talent that would never be discovered without a skate park. A skate park opens up opportunities to make new friends and exciting memories that you could relish for a lifetime. Surrounding towns such as Highlands, Waynesville, Asheville, Brevard, Morganton, and Cherokee all have one, if not multiple, skate parks. Morganton recently received a park from Tony Hawk, a very famous adult skateboarder. It could be a possibility of funding for the park. A decade ago, there were nine million casual skateboarders, rode once or twice a month. There are almost three million core skaters who at least rode once or twice a week. Three million out of those nine million skaters were younger than 12. More than a third of skaters start in their pre-teen years, and many skaters continue right into adulthood. A skate park would draw every age to it, father and sons, brothers and sisters, everyone would enjoy it. The problem most community have, most communities have with a skate park is the funding and return on investment. The ROI of concrete skate parks are incredible. The most significant cost of a concrete skate park is the building cost and the maintenance cost. The maintenance cost of a concrete skate park is extremely low. Most skate parks see about 29,000 visits per year solely for the cost of construction. Skate parks can also help revitalize communities. Studies show active teens perform better in academic situations, and are genuinely more fit than non-skaters. When potential visitors search online for their travel plans, it would tell them how Franklin feels about their youth. We've been thinking of possible locations of where the park could go in Franklin, and we would be glad to further discuss it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, sir. Okay, Mr. Pangel, Dave Pangel.
We didn't finish our proposition.
Pardon?
We finished our proposition.
Okay, all right, good. Mr. McMahon.
Yes. Thought you'd get rid of me so easily.
Good work, don't it?
You know, it's funny, I never felt that nervous sitting over there, but over here, I want to first, on a personal level, say congratulations to the newly elected. It sounds like y'all are jumping in both feet first and getting right in there, and congratulations to you. And now I want to commend these young men who are speaking about a skate park. That's awesome, for young people to come out and engage the, the local government that way to try to get the things, you know, that they feel we need for our town. I don't know them, but I'm proud of them for that. But what I really wanted to talk about tonight is, just briefly, in our last meeting, we talked just for a moment about the possibility of changing the way sick hours were accrued for our 24-hour and 12-hour employees, our police and fire. And I just would really like to encourage the board not to let that just fall through the cracks, and maybe give that a, a second look. I don't recall which one of the candidates it was, maybe Mr. Lewis. I know someone in the, in the papers said they were, you know, they wanted to look out for our emergency personnel, and I think this is the perfect opportunity to, to do so. If you wanted to get more details on the situation, I would encourage you to talk to Summer or Travis, they could fill you in on the details. But essentially, we were discussing people who work 24 or 12-hour shifts, accruing 24 and 12 hours of sick time, rather than the eight hours, than an eight-hour shift worker accrues. And some people on the board expressed concern that it was unfair if we changed it, that it would be unfair to the, the eight-hour workers. And I, I don't personally feel that that would be unfair, because we're not, you would not be taking anything away from the eight-hour workers. I think that it's unfair to keep it the way it is. The, the guys who work in 12 and 24-hour shifts are not accruing sick time as, as quick enough to use it, and, and it's, they're not accruing, what, they're not getting the same return on what they're putting in as the eight-hour guys, essentially is what I'm trying to say. And I understand that there's a, a financial component that would have to be looked at, and, and that it would be, you know, something you would have to discuss at length, I'm sure. But really, I just wanted to encourage you guys to look at it again, and not to let it fall by the wayside. Our police and fire guys, as everybody knows, you know, every day they go to work, they're putting it on the line for us, and we got to take care of that, right? So that's all I wanted to say. Just wanted you guys to consider them, and, and maybe revisit that issue.
Thank you. All right, this next item is a letter of support for the DOT's growth projections for Macon County. We have Rose Bogus from Region A here with us tonight, and it was her meeting that kept me from going to Raleigh.
Or you're welcome.
You're welcome to.
Yes, I'm here tonight to give you a little update on the Macon County Comprehensive Transportation Plan that is underway right now, currently being updated, and will be considered for adoption next spring. Our summer will have a series of public workshops with a draft plan, and then hopefully be coming back to Macon County, the town of Highlands, and the town of Franklin for adoption in, later on in the year. And so at this point in the planning process, NCDOT is developing traffic forecasts for the future year of 2045. And part of them developing these traffic forecasts is to look at future population projections and employment projections. And so they've looked at the historical data, but they want to come back to the local governments and just make sure that there's nothing that would, that would be different in the future to, to not use those, the historical projections. So the average annual growth rate since 1990 has been about 1.2% for population, and then the employment-to-population ratio has averaged about 0.42%. So they're asking, is that a reasonable and appropriate assumption moving forward for the next 20 years to use those same growth rates? They just want to check and see, is there any major game changers coming along that they may not know of, that the data don't show, that would, that would make that different? So if you had some reason to believe that the future population was going to be drastically higher or lower, they would just want to know that, and also it's just a good chance to check in and make sure that y'all are aware the plan is, is happening and coming down. So they just ask for, for you to say whether those averages are reasonable and appropriate. None of us have a crystal ball, and you won't be held to it if it's different than that, but we do have to make some assumptions when doing long-range planning, and they wanted to, to check in to see if that, if you had any recommendation for a different growth rate than the historical one.
Ms. Bogus, let me ask you this. I was at that meeting. Did, did we not break it down kind of on those averages, region-wise? Kind of a, what, what, what were the other counties facing on this? Kind of a, what were the other counties facing on this? About the growth rate?
Not sure which meeting you're talking about.
The one where we met in Cherokee the other night.
That was looking at the crash data, I believe.
Oh, that was just crash data.
That was just crash data that we were looking at there, yeah. Yeah, all the counties have slightly different projections. They're, these are, these numbers are from the State Office of Budget Management, Office of State, State and Budget Management.
Yes. That's what I was speaking to.
Right, right. So, and they also look at the demographics. They look at the, the reason they look at the employment projections is because the working population drives on the roads more than the non-working population. So that varies by county depending on the demographics of age primarily. And so that's the 0.42%, kind of covers from 1990 to 2017 is our, is our base year because that's the most recent year where we have good data and then we're kind of projecting that forward. Did they have a copy of the memo, Summer?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So there's a graph on the back of it that shows kind of the historical actual numbers versus the projected.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, just call them.
Yeah, I would say your growth estimates are as good as anybody else could estimate. But I want to mention that maybe growth is one component of what NC DOT's focus should be in this area. And that is actually what's on the ground, shortcuts and traffic patterns. And they've changed pretty greatly, more so than our, our population has. I mean, stuff like Roller Mill Road is now a heavily used shortcut. I mean, that is in a traffic pattern for people daily. And Siler Road, that's in everybody's traffic pattern. And as 441 down, lack of a better term, Hamburger Hill, as that's changed, Roller Mill Road and Siler Road are both going to be more heavily used. And I don't want those to fall off NC DOT's radar. I mean, they need to be straightened and sidewalks, if at all possible.
Absolutely. And so they don't look just at population projections. They actually look at the traffic counts on all those individual roads as well, the historic traffic, everywhere that they have actual traffic count data. And so that's sort of, trying not to go into the weeds too deep on this. But, but they do recognize that growth doesn't happen uniformly across the geography of the county. We look at areas that, for instance, are covered with public lands and are extremely steep are going to grow at a much lower rate or a flat rate than areas along the town centers and along the major four lane highways. So it's, it's not equally distributed, absolutely.
Any other questions, Ms. Bogus? So you want us to write a letter, which we can do, just in support of...
Well, you can also just make a motion that you endorse these population and employment estimates and just have it recorded in the minutes. It's fine if you want to write a letter, that's fine. Macon County and Highlands just made a motion to endorse the 1.2 and 0.42.
Right, okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Just a second. Any further discuss, any further discussion? If not, all in favor. We'll take care of it. Thank you, ma'am.
Rest it up, Travis.
Okay. A funding request for Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration. Ms. Cantino? Oh, you're here, okay.
By the way, what you call Hamburger Hill, my friend Gene Welch calls ulcer gulch. That's Gene Welch's, not mine. I'm Bobby Cantino with the Arts Council and also with Martin Luther King Day. The Arts Council has partnered with the Human Relations Council for many years now to help with the planning and production of our Martin Luther King Celebration, which this year is on Sunday, January 19th at 3 o'clock. First United Methodist Church has also been a partner in this event for many, many years. We are revamping, raising the bar this year on our Martin Luther King Celebration. And it's going to be basically a music tribute to Dr. King. Without a speaker, there will be a whole lot of musicians. There'll be a visual arts component, some dance, some line, but basically music. It's going to be highly entertaining and uplifting and educational. There will be a lot of, excuse me, spirituals performed. It will involve a lot of rehearsal. It's going to be, we're upping the bar. We ask if, and I don't know if you, in your packet, have a copy of the memo that I sent to Summer? We do have four partners and we're all putting, well, we have three partners and we hope that the Town Council will partner with us as well. We're asking you if you will commit $500 to this King celebration, which will be spent on publicity, printing, well, the whole day. There's a large reception. I know many of you have attended in the past. So there's, the main costs are artist fees, publicity, and food. There are also some miscellaneous costs of printing and other things. The Arts Council has pledged $500. We're asking the town to match our 500. The Human Relations Council and First Methodist, both are contributing partners as well with, with money to support the day. If we, and we're asking just for a commitment from you, if in fact, we don't need to, we, we've had two planning sessions already. We have a wonderful hit list. We need a commitment of money so that we can get some artists, for some artists in that we have targeted. If we don't spend that much money, and there are over the years the Human Relations Council has put a lot of time and effort and a lot of volunteer time, effort, and talent goes into this. So we may not spend all of your $500, but we'd like to have it in, to know we have it to offer to spend if we need that much. And what we would like for you to do is commit $500, but not give us $500. And we can submit to you an invoice afterwards and show you exactly how we spent all of the money. And if there is less spent than the $500 ceiling we're asking for, it won't cost the town $500. Am I clear about that?
Yes, sir.
Bobby, whenever seller agrees to pay up to $500 of closing costs, there's going to be $500 of closing costs.
If you think it's $500, if you think you're getting value out of that.
It's a very honorable request. Right or wrong, this board chose to discontinue the nonprofit funding pool. And this looks like a entry through the back door of which we have not allowed up. To me, it looks like if we entertain this favorably, would we not allow anybody else who was on that list over the years just to come one by one and make their pitch? I mean, that's just, that's where I'm at fundamentally, just from a standpoint here. And I'd like to hear what some of the board members might think about that. You'd obviously disagree. Tell me now.
Oh, you're right. You're right. I mean, I think the, the whole point of that community funding pool was so that people didn't come piece me up. But that being said, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea. I don't know if we have the money to do it or not. But I see here that the Job Corps members want to be involved with that as well. And I remember being a kid, the Job Corps was much more involved in this community and I'd like to see them more involved in the community again. I don't know if this event will help that much, but I'm not opposed to the idea.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're not wrong. You're right.
Did y'all approach the TDA by any chance?
The TDA, we have been told, is limited to promoting things outside the county?
It's the opposite. The TDA, we would be glad to have heard that request. It does anything inside or outside. It's all about involvement in tourism and this, this would have fit the mold perfectly.
Well, would it, I mean, this isn't really about tourism. This is about the people of Franklin.
But it's an event.
Yes.
And anything that that can do, whether it's to promote residential or tourists in here, it's getting people out of the community for an activity. And that's kind of the goal of the TDA, so.
And you had advertising in your budget and that is one of the things the TDA was fun. That place all fit.
Yeah. I kind of like the idea of Franklin being a co-sponsor at something like this. But the money coming from the TDA would be...
When is the next TDA meeting?
Yeah, we cut it close because your next meeting isn't until the second Monday. You could, you could possibly pull it off. If you could get your application into me by Wednesday, you would be on the TDA agenda for next Monday. They would hear your request and then they could vote to approve it at their January, it's the second Monday in January. So you could theoretically get it in time. And I'll be glad to work with you on it. I wouldn't care to at all.
Any further questions from the board?
I'd, I'd like to see that go to the TDA and be supported by the TDA.
I'll send you the funding application first thing in the morning, Ms. Cantino.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is an update from the Franklin Fire and Rescue. Chief Reedlog, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Town Council, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight and briefly update you of our events and progress that we are excited to tell you about. In the last year alone, you've heard a lot of requests from Franklin Fire Department and you've so graciously worked with us in many ways. So, and I kind of want to update you and bring you to what that is going to involve in our new future and kind of where we hope to go in the near future with some of our projects. Tonight, I've also got one of my assistant chiefs with me, Assistant Chief Ryan Percy, will also be asked to speak to you shortly after I do. So, excuse me. In 2012, if I can take you mind back to that far, Franklin Fire Department went through a ISO insurance rating inspection. And that's where the state came out and inspected us on our abilities to fight fires, so to speak, and give us a rating of a Class III and IV. That's something that we are very proud of. That's a rating that's almost unheard of on this side of the state. So that was a great accomplishment for Franklin Fire. Currently today, we still hold that Class III, IV rating. And that's not to say however, we don't realize the needs and the changing demands of our customers. We need to continue to provide a strong fire service and insurance ratings for these homeowners and business owners inside Macon County. So to plan that and to work towards that, Franklin Fire Department would like to communicate our progress that we've made to the ISO, events that we continue to involve in and that we've worked to provide the best solution for the citizens who currently don't have a Class III, IV rating. We have a small area in our fire district that currently is outside of a six-mile response area. What that means for them is they don't get the benefits of that Class III, IV rating. Instead, they would be in a Class IX if they're in the six-mile. And if they're outside of that six-mile, they would not only be that, but it'd be a little worse. They would be in a Class X, which means insurance companies may not be able to write them an insurance policy. So we wanted to pay close attention to that and bring it to your attention and talk to you about how we could help those folks out as we think it's very important to do so. So to bring you up to speed, the year 2017, on December the 4th, the Town of Franklin and the Council approved a 10-year strategic plan from Franklin Fire and Rescue. That plan was adopted by the town and then it was also given to the Macon County Board of Commissioners and Macon County officials. In that plan, we made suggestions that we needed to accommodate changing needs for our customers, which we're currently striving to evolve to support those needs, such as I mentioned, is the lower insurance ratings. Since the year 2017, we have submitted some goals to you, that strategic plan that we presented as Franklin Fire. And in that plan, we had key goals that we wanted to meet and they were outlined in that plan. Laid out in that plan, we talked about switching our staff status in 2017, which you supported us in. And we made changes to support currently working three shifts with two personnel on 24 hours a day. They work a 24/48 schedule. We're maintaining a 28-member volunteer status, seven career status, and 10 part-time status employees, which is very good. So currently, in the year 2018/19 budget cycle, some key goals that we have met, and these are the ones that we're really proud of because it has been considered hard work on Franklin Fire Department and the Town of Franklin. And this board has had great help in that and I appreciate it. I want you to know that we've had goals to develop a work plan. And that plan was to work with the Town of Franklin, Macon County officials to acquire land and acquisition for a potential substation. What that does is give us a station to provide coverage outside of that six-mile response area from our current station. Today, we have developed that plan. I'm proud to say that the Town of Franklin has acquired the land. We currently have land for the possibility of a future substation located on MP&amp;L Loop off the Silva Highway. That takes great time and efforts on this board and the town administration. And I want to say thank you for that. So we're currently proceeding with that. To let you know, update on that property. I don't know if all of you are familiar with it, but the property has been excavated, it's been gravelled, and it's ready to basically look and proceeding with a assessment of what it would be to build on. It has had a compression test in the past. I'm sure that's something that we'll probably have to do again. But however, we are excited about that property. It's got great access to it, the paved access to the front door. The location is absolutely prime. During our research and studies of that property, we looked at mileage from that location to some of the further points in our district, which was in the Class X area. And I've got some numbers to tell you what this would do. Basically, you're sponsoring that location. If we had a substation at that location, we'll show great improvements in the numbers of homeowners and business owners that will be able to get a lower rating. Excuse me. Currently, Franklin Fire has a total of 8,361 structures in our fire district. Out of those 8,361, we currently have 7,632 of those structures within a five-mile response area utilizing our current station here in town. But however, if we added the substation, which we intend to do, at the current location where the property is on MP&amp;L Loop, that would provide us to provide coverage to 8,132 structures within a five-mile response plan. So what does that mean? It of course means that the owners of the structures inside the five-mile response area would then be eligible to receive the Class III, IV rating that we earned in 2012. That is a great savings of insurance cost. That is a great rating that is better than we have ever provided in the past. So I'm excited to say that. Just a little further current numbers. Currently, Franklin Fire and Rescue has 654 structures that lie in a six-mile response area, which makes these structures, and it's set in a Class IX rating area. And further, we have 75 structures that are currently in a Class X area, which, as I spoke of earlier, has the possibility of no insurance because they sit so far away from their current fire station. If we add this substation that I speak of, this would change and Franklin Fire Department would change this to only 178 structures within the six-mile response plan. would change this to only 178 structures within the six-mile response plan. That's great. That, that is a number that I'm very excited of. And the other number that is just ecstatic to me is, according to the maps that we have mapped this area and the geographic boundaries of, this would put zero structures in a Class X area. That's something that I didn't think was comfortable, just to be honest with you. But according to the maps that the Town of Franklin Mapping and the Macon County Mapping Office has looked at with us and provided us, which I think everyone should have a copy of tonight in front of you, that gives us zero structures inside a Class X rating. So we're excited to announce that. Furthermore, I want to take the time to thank you for a investment that we made currently. In August of 2019, Franklin Fire and Rescue in Town of Franklin was able to purchase a pumper, and that was a used pumper from Cassius Fire Department. I want to update you that that truck is now in service. It's been a great truck so far. We're proud of it. And this was replaced, this truck replaced a pumper truck that was no longer in service to us because of pump failure and unsafe conditions. So the town was very graceful to us to allow us to go out and take opportunity to travel, look at means to replace this truck, and we feel that we really got a good deal in this. So we're looking to complete that engine and put it possibly in a substation site in the near future, and I want to thank you for that. If you have any questions about the maps, I have asked that you be provided a copy of the maps tonight. In front of you, you'll see two maps. One of them has a bluish color on it, which will be the map with the new substation site service area, and the map with just the green, pink, and gray color would be the current way it sits. The blue color indicates area that would be added into our five-mile response area. I know it's hard to read the actual road there if it's actually possible, but however, some of these geographic areas would include Sanders Town, Piney Grove, Holly Springs, Corbin Cove, a lot of the areas that I have talked to you about earlier in the year. Really exciting that that map looks as good as it does for our mileage. So, the other announcement that I wanted to make to you tonight is Franklin Fire has planned to move forward with this substation, and we have put together a building committee. We're currently working to establish the needs and plans for the substation and for this building, once we get that far. Once this committee has plans to finalize and to go on, they will be meeting and will probably re-approach the town and be asking for the bidding process in the fact of building the substation. So I want to announce to you that I've appointed Chief, or Assistant Chief Ron Hershey to be the head of that building committee in my department. He worked with these guys and formed this committee within the last two weeks. I'd kinda like to him, let him give the update of what that committee's gonna do and where they stand currently. So, once again, I'd just like to say thank you. The town has really gone out to support Franklin Fire Department and the community and outlining communities as well. So we feel that we've made great accomplishments and have a great working relationship, and I just wanted to say thank you and update you on the status of our current adventures. So, Chief Hershey?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Town Board. Just to let you know, like Chief said, we established the building committee. We have our first meeting last Tuesday. It was at the site. We did a survey of the site and kinda came up with a plan of the size of building that we think would be appropriate for that site, and also talked about the needs of the fire department and what we thought should be in this building. We do have some field trips planned to some fire stations in the region to try to get some ideas together on what we would like to build and bring before the Town Board and the, the Fire Chief to get an idea together. Like I said, we're in our infancy right now. We're just getting off the ground. We hope to be coming to y'all very soon with requests and some details of what we're looking to do.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Culpepper.
It's very important that we can be able to get the ratings down from the nine and maybe even tens down to three and four, and that'd be very commendable. Would that be true whether or not there was two trucks, four trucks, or six trucks parked out there on the loop?
As of this time, the North Carolina State Fire Marshal requires that there be one engine in a substation, and we, we have that ability since purchasing this, this last truck that was.
But the, the one engine itself would have the effect of going from the nine to the four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Culpepper.
I love the idea that you're gonna go on a field trip and look at other stations. I mean, that, that's, that's smart. And see if, see if they'll let you steal their plans too if you find a substation you like, because if you can get a set of plans, that's, that's money ahead for more equipment or whatever you need. I mean...
Don't literally steal it.
No, ask them. Ask them if you can steal their plan, and I mean...
It's possible.
Ryan, you didn't hear any of that. Okay, any further questions? Yes, ma'am?
Chief, it might be for Chief Bredele, I'm not sure, but if, how quick could you get into operation? Can you have a temporary structure to house a something while you're in the process of building? I'm just wondering how quick to get this...
We, we have looked at temporary sites, and due to cost effectiveness and the taxpayer money that's involved in this, we think building for the future is recommended. We want to do this right. We don't want to be in a situation where we kinda hurt our expenses and then don't have the money to actually do the right things. So I think taking our time, moving in this as an investment and doing it right will be of equal importance of just the rating itself. So I, it would be my recommendation that we continue to study this, operate out of our one station until we can actually build the substation to the state standards and the needs of the future, so to speak.
And I didn't mean at another site. I meant at that site, and, but I just was wondering if it was temporary until such time or just till the full structure was completed?
I, I, I don't have a timeline on this project, unfortunately. Hopefully, when we get into assessing other stations and the cost range of this, we'll come back with a greater timeline. However, I'm excited to say that this lot is ready for building. We do have some money set in reserve to possibly go ahead and start the foundation work in the near future, and hopefully with some money in the upcoming year budget that would free off some of our debt services, we will be able to go ahead and get this project completed. So we, we are going to expand into other options as well. Chief Hershey and Captain Senter and a few others that are in the building committee have reached out to a USDA representative and the possibility of loan and grants. There are several things that still have to be answered and explored, but we are looking into that.
Thank you. One last question for me. The people who are in the 10-mile right now, they're already paying Franklin Fire tax? And it, it won't increase when they go to a six-mile?
No, the, we're not asking for a fire tax increase at this time. That, that was a key point. We're certainly not asking for an increase at this time.
If I may address that real quick, they'd actually see a decrease in their fire tax and then also, well, not in their fire tax, but in their insurance rating. They would see a significant decrease.
They can mail us the extra.
Of course.
Ms. Horton?
You currently have a five-mile district. Is that, is that what a district is now? Five miles from the fire station here in Franklin?
Yeah, that's what they rate you on, basically, a response to that, like five-mile.
We don't serve anyone outside the five-mile district now?
I'm sorry?
We don't serve anyone outside the five-mile district now?
We do. We have a five-mile district and a six-mile district.
We've got a six-mile district already approved?
Which is where those...
You don't have to get approval from anybody else to extend from the five to the six to cover the area that you're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Yes, sir.
Ma'am, what's your timeframe on this ISO recertification? I mean, do you have to get this building done at a certain time to get this, get this recertification on ISO?
That's a great question. It's, it's not a requirement in the state timeline, so to speak. However, the state will come back and do another assessment of Franklin Fire. When that's gonna be, we don't know. They've not announced that yet. Relatively speaking, they like to do it every 10 years. We were last tested in 2012. I can say the Highlands Fire Department and Otto Fire Department and surrounding communities have been notified that they will be up for recert or retest this year. So I'm expecting it to be anytime in the near future. This addition, the substation would greatly help our numbers, greatly help our ratings, and I believe even possibly give us better than what we currently set at.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thanks to Town Council for all your support. Thanks, guys.
Certainly. Okay, the next item, Ms. McCray asked to modify the agenda to talk about the sculpture.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Scott. When we did our budget, when we adopted our budget, we agreed to a $15,000 contribution to the sculpt, public sculpture that the Women's History Trail is planning for the, near the river. I know, I don't know if you two are aware of it, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer it. It's a very large project. It's a $400,000 project. We have raised more than $100,000 with contributions and mostly unsolicited contributions. We need just a little bit more for the first payment to the sculptor to get us on his way to making a one-third size maquette. And so I would request that we make that money available that's already been budgeted for the project.
Was, did, did we actually budget it or just talk about it?
There was, there is actually $15,000 in economic development that was budgeted.
It was economic development?
Yeah. For this current budget year that we're in.
Okay. So, but not specifically for the, the statute? It was economic development?
We talked about that. We agree, I think we all agreed.
I don't, I don't wanna do John's job and be a wet blanket, but didn't we spend five of that on, on...
They've never formally requested that.
Okay, so we're on the town square?
It's still in our coffers. They've never come forward after Mayor Scott's...
The, the Garden Club?
Never came forward to request that.
They're, they're being reorganized. I think they will be coming, yeah, before the end of the fiscal year.
Well, I don't know. Maybe they will, but they've told me that they don't need the money. I guess I've heard from some of them, so I don't...
Well, I told me the opposite, so, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, Board, if I may, what you could do, because you still do have the full 15 in economic development right now. If it's the will of the Board, you could direct myself and Finance to execute that. If we could just get an invoice to pay from, and then if the Garden Club does wanna move forward, Mr. Mayor, they can come back and we can look at filling their requests, because we do have 2,500 budgeted for them in beautification. So we can definitely work with both of those requests.
Okay.
Need a motion for that?
If you don't mind, yes, sir.
Move that we authorize a $15,000 set aside in, what's it in, ma'am?
Economic development.
Economic development to be used for the sculpture purpose.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'll get you both in position.
Mr. Collins, you wanted to bring up a matter?
Just, just briefly. We've got a new board looking forward to moving ahead. You know, we've got several different departments, water, sewer, police, fire, that we have representatives from the boards to be with those departments and groups, and I wish that Madam Manager would in the next week or so disseminate out to all the members what different appointments representatives are needed, give the department, give the members a chance to maybe suggest if we want to broaden that. I've heard some input, maybe would we want a representative with ABC Board possibly, or Planning, or whatever, and then give the members a chance to, you know, kinda try to raise their hand if they have a preference. I know some have already, you know, expressed a desire to be on certain types of committees, but with this, with this time or this freshness, I think we'd all take a good look at where we're at on that and maybe between now and next meeting.
I think by, I think by our policy and procedures, that is up to the mayor to make those appointments. So I'll be glad to take it into consideration if somebody's got a special place they wanna serve, and we'll get you that list together.
Well, we need to, we need to address, because we, you know, we have some now with two members and some with one?
No, we have no two members at all.
Don and I are both on the water and sewer board.
Well, yeah, one of you's watering one sewer sort of.
You know, that's, that is another area that maybe would be right, remember, we have a retreat or whatever coming up to, to visit that to see if we still, if that's the approach we wanna take. But nonetheless, between here and there, that's...
And the fact that, I don't think Don or I, neither one of us know which one's water, which one's sewer. I think that Joe's right, that could use some clarification, and maybe we could be told what our jobs are. We could report back to you more effectively, Mayor Bob.
That's fine. I think probably you're exactly right. We, we have hashed this out. I've been going on my fourth term, and we've hashed it out every term with trying to settle it.
Don't wanna miss a chance to do it again.
Well, that's true. That's true. Maybe we'll get it right the next time. But I was gonna bring that up in just a minute, Mr. Collins. Let's go on around the table. I'll start with Ms. Horton. Anything you wanna bring up? We sort of do this at the very closing of the meeting. We go around and see what's on your mind.
I don't have anything in particular that I wanna bring up. I appreciate this board. I appreciate the, the fire department and all the employees and the emergency services folks, the water and sewer folks, all the people who make everything work. We get to sit back here around the, behind the table, look at the pictures and the books and the papers and the numbers, and they're the ones out there on the front lines getting all the work done. I appreciate them doing that, and they're all important. They're all important to us because we're here, because the people in this town want somebody to perform and do what they have to have done in order to be prosperous and safe and feel, feel good about their town. And I just appreciate the opportunity to sit with you and take a little part of that. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Lewis?
Glad to be here with y'all. Wish my mom and dad were here to see it. Sadly, they're not. I reiterate what Jack said about our employees, how important they are, and just really look forward to working with y'all. Think we've got a good board.
Ms. McCray?
I was thinking, I serve on the Economic Development Commission, which sometimes does interesting things, and I know other people serve on boards from this group. Would it not be a good idea to have maybe a report back if something is going on in one of these committees, so we can all find out about it?
I thought that we had that, except that sometimes it wouldn't let you report back on Economic Development.
Well, like I gave you the little program about opportunities, though.
Right.
And the last meeting was, had to do with problems in the school system and how, you know, they, they wanted a recommendation from us, and I'd be glad to report to this board at some time, maybe in the next meeting about that. Like, you, I know you're on the Macon Program for Progress. It might make us feel more connected to the community if we knew what these other boards were doing.
Sure.
Just a short meeting. I mean, it doesn't have to be like a big detail.
We could maybe be held accountable and do a presentation on our specific thing.
Sure.
Quarterly.
You could do that now. Just do it, yeah. Yeah, I don't think we need any formal...
Well, I mean, organization and, and dates and times helps people get organized and knowing when to do what and how to do it.
I'll appoint you to go listen in on the county, okay? And bring it back to us. No, I, I agree with you, and I think that we, I think that's always been pretty much understood that we could do that, because like I said, I, the only thing I really serve on anymore is the Program for Progress and...
And then the Southwestern Commission, you know?
Well, I, I bring that up because everybody's invited.
Yeah, we're all invited.
Everybody on the board is invited. I try to communicate that. Okay, let's see here. Ms. Manager?
Just thankful to be here for another two years, thankful no one ran against me, so I had to...
I had the opportunity.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes, I want to recognize Mr. Talent and his friends for coming out here and talking to us about a skate park every few years, or maybe more often, I don't know, kids come out here that maybe don't play the normal sports or do the hero sports that we reward so highly in this town and this county, they do maybe different things, and they don't have any services, and I think it's seriously time for us as a town, or us to maybe work jointly with the county, or somebody somewhere needs to start thinking outside the box and doing some different types of outdoor recreation activities for our youth. I mean, we say we value our youth, but I don't think it actually translates into, onto the ground for outdoor recreation. I'd like to support ideas like that.
I think you just talked your way into something.
Ms. Collins?
Just piggybacking on that, you all were here tonight as persons to be heard, we heard you, but the very nature of that designation does not allow us to go back and forth with the conversation at this time. We hear you and we absorb it, so stay on us, you know, we need to get to an agenda item for us to go and to talk, so just because we were quiet tonight, it's not because we were or we're not interested, it's just the way that the structure of the meeting is, but we appreciate your attendance.
Absolutely. It's my turn. One thing that I'd like us to do after our January meeting, be thinking about it when it would be convenient, I'd like for us to hold, I don't know, it's kind of a mixture of planning session and work session, where we can just all get together in here, or choose a place to go, not exactly like a formal retreat, but just to sit down, have some pizza maybe, and talk about where we're going sometime in January, whether we want to do it at night, whether we want to set up a Saturday, or however we want to do it, but please be thinking about that, because I think it's very necessary, just starting out with a couple of new members like we have tonight. I want to thank the town employees, they did a fantastic job on the Winter Wonderland, and a lot of people don't realize it, but the town puts a tremendous amount of support into the Christmas parade, although that's a Chamber of Commerce event. We, a lot of our employees are involved in setting up the barricades and everything. Thursday, we have the Essentials of Municipal Government, I think some of you got signed up, Ms. Horton, I think you did, and Ms. Manchin, and that brings up an issue, right after you've been elected, you also have to sit through a ethics class, and we'll get you set up, we're probably going to do it on a webinar, where we can do it here in the town boardroom, you won't have to go to chapel here or anywhere to do it, and those of you that are in Essentials, you'll be taken care of Thursday, because it's part of the Essentials program. I don't have anything else for tonight, but I agree with Mr. Collins on you young people coming tonight and see democracy, and I'm sorry if it got a little boring at times, but sometimes it doesn't, but I appreciate y'all being here. Anybody else? If not, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, the town looks beautiful, it just looks beautiful, when I drove in tonight and all the lights were on, the tree and everything, so thank you, I know the town employees did that, it was, it's really, really beautiful.
Oh, yeah, the town offices will be closed December 24th, 25th, and 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday, closed Wednesday, January 1st in observance of New Year's Day, and I understand the planning for the Ruby Drop is well underway, and I'll see everybody out there at the Ruby Drop. So I have nothing else unless anybody else does.
Welcome to the board, Mike and Jack, glad to have you.
Absolutely. All right, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I was getting worried there for a minute, all in favor. All right, let's go home.